Okay. Good evening to the, and welcome to the Shasberry School Board meeting. And it is six thirty-one. And we will begin with public, uh, citizens' comments. And I want to, I, I realize why a lot of you people are here. And I want to give everybody a chance to speak, but I want to give, if we can do it in five minutes, that would be great. So, if we can, um, we'll start, yes?
My name is Mrs. Clark.
Okay.
Sixth grade currently. Um, I'm here to express concern for our building, students, and our community. A colleague of mine, Sarah Callanan.
Kathy.
Excuse me? Why is it going up there?
Kathy, we won't bite ya.
If you wanna be heard.
I, you know, I have a very big voice.
I don't know how close you gotta get, he'll...
That's your...
I'm here to con- um, express my concerns for our building, students, and our community. A colleague of mine, Sarah Callanan, has been told she is reassigned and will no longer service our building, which is what she was hired to do. This is not only a loss to the students that she works with, but also to our community and school. Another colleague of mine, Susan Green, who could not be here, also shares my concern, and she wrote a letter that I'd like to share. "To the members of Shasberry School Board, this is a letter written on behalf of my colleague, Sarah Callanan. I am requesting that you support her in keeping her at Shasberry Schools a full-time special educator. Shasberry Schools always had an excellent reputation in special education. The three people who serve the needs of our students in this area have made a huge difference in their lives. Sarah is definitely one of those people. I have seen over and over firsthand how Sarah has transformed many of our students, not only academically, but socially, into responsible young people. Because I teach all the students in our school, I have to also deal with the challenges that can come along with this task. I fully appreciate the support Sarah and her colleagues have always given to these students to help them become more successful in all aspects of school life. I have witnessed times when Sarah had had to say what needed to be said to students and parents when it may not have been easy for them to hear. But Sarah approaches them with such compassion and professionalism, she is able to move all involved forward for the betterment of the student. Sarah and her husband have opened their home to some of these children to provide respite for the families and to further help her students. She is a viable source at our special education team, and I respectfully ask that she not be reassigned in the SBSU district. The reason we are presenting this, this to the board is, we are hoping that the board can do everything in their power to prevent this reassignment from happening. Thank you."
Could I ask, Mrs. Clark, could we have a copy of the letter that you just read?
Oh, you can have both of them.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Lilabeth Foley, and as a parent here at Shasberry Elementary, I would like to say too, that Sarah should be, um, left alone here at our school, and we would love her to stay. The second one is, um, I would like to thank, um, Mr. Hankton for the thirty-one years of his service to this school and the community. And we have organized a 5K run, uh, on Father's Day, and you're all welcome to wish him well or come run and, um, have a fun walk. Thank you.
I have another letter to read in support of Sarah.
How long is it?
Um, it would take me probably two minutes.
Okay.
I'll read fast.
Speed reading.
So, this is on behalf of a colleague of mine who's asked me to read this. Sarah Callanan is an ex- essential part of the Sh- Shasberry School Team. From a personal standpoint, she is the first to step up and get involved when someone is sick, needs help, or has a question. When I started working here, she was the first one to reach out to me and make me feel welcome. Since then, nine years have passed, and many great teachers and principals have come and gone, but Sarah and a few others still remain. These few seasoned teachers are an asset to the school. They know the school, the history, the students, and the community. They help hold the school together during times of transition. In addition to being a leader amongst the staff, Sarah is an excellent special educator. She creates relationships with students and parents and earns their trust and respect. She is knowledgeable, confident, and competent. There are few committees and that, there are few committees and that she does not have her hand in, there are few committees that she does not have her hand in and is a regular attendant to board meetings. Sarah has volunteered her time in my classroom during her lunch to serve the students in the school who are not on her caseload. She goes above and beyond to provide the students and her colleagues with support. It is easy to understand why anyone would want Sarah to be on their team and work with them, but please consider the effect this reassigning will have on our school and the students. Sincerely, Hannah Outwater, kindergarten teacher at Shasberry."
Thank you.
You can be next.
I'm really fast. I'm Carol Stair. I've been a parent educator, specialized for seventeen years at Shasberry. Um, a lot of school boards and schools this time of year are working on budgets. Um, tonight's meeting is not on the budget. Tonight's meeting is really on children, our children. Um, more to the point, it's about our very special children. Children are special. These are our very special children, who have not always been how, um, dealt with a, a good hand in life. It's about a special education teacher who has, for the last fourteen years, been teaching many of these children at Shasberry Elementary School. Because Sarah has been my supervisor for all of these fourteen years, I have seen firsthand the impact and the passion that she displays each and every day in the classroom. Sarah choo- chose to be a teacher, and every day, one can see that she loves the job she does. To suddenly decide to take a person who is such an important part of our school away from her teaching to be a full-time evaluator, a job that could probably be done with a less seasoned teacher, would not only be unfair to her, but it would be a real disservice to our community and a tragedy to their, to our children and the families who she advocates for and helps to make a difference in their lives. Thank you for your time.
Mrs. Stair?
Oh, that's right.
Is that alright?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Robin Kozlowski. I have three children that attend on this school. I moved up here from Connecticut about three years ago, and Sarah took my kids under her wing, tested them, did all the things that should've probably been done in Connecticut. So, for me, it's really personal. Um, I did have four children here. She's helped every one of them. And my youngest is gonna be in first grade, so I would like her to see, um, or see, had Ms. Callahan see her go through and help her the way she's helped the rest of my children. And I agree with everything, I don't think I could even add anymore to what they've already said, which is pretty awesome. Thanks.
There is, Fran, uh, there is a sign and sheet. I just wanna get your names. We don't need emails or phone numbers. I just wanna get a count of how many people are here. So, that's the only reason for that, 'cause Richard's gonna ask.
I've been a teacher in this system for about forty years. Twenty, over twenty here. I was here when Sarah was hired. Um, I have several questions and comments to share with those gathered here this evening about Sarah Callanan's proposed change in positions. One, is this a new position or is someone currently in this position? If someone is currently in this position, why is a change being made? Two, is the person who is currently in this position leaving, or are they being reassigned as well, and why? After Sarah's refusal, was it ever offered to someone else in-house? What, number four, why was the position not posted when Sarah refused the offer? Number five, why is Sarah being given an ultimatum to take this position after she expressed no interest in it at all? Number six, is Sarah, Sarah's present job description as teacher different from the one she is being asked to take? How is this change being justified, since they are two entirely different positions? Seven, what happens to Shasberry's special needs children? Sarah has established a wonderful rapport and a fine trust with families and the community over the past fourteen years. She knows the children well and understands their needs. I would think that continuity and continuum of progress for students who are, who are already struggling with academics supersedes anything else. Do you have anyone with a proven track record as fine or better than Sarah's to offer Shasberry Elementary? If Sarah refuses to take this position, will she be forced to, forced or choose to leave the district? Then you will have nothing. Number ten, to take a superior teacher away from the students and put her behind a desk filling out state forms and writing reports is not only ludicrous, not common sense, and an injustice, but punitive to a fine teacher, to the fine teacher that Sarah is. Most importantly, it is a phenomenal injustice to the education of our special needs students in Shasberry. This isn't what special needs education should be about. It's about children, it's about learning, it's about a good teacher, and what's best for students. What is being proposed seems to be more focused on writing reports than about leaving a good teacher where she wants to be, teaching and educating the children of this community. Number ten, I would think that the job description of any administrator for special needs would have to possess the expertise to write superior IEPs and evaluations themselves, as well as the essential skills to supervise, oversee, and train all special needs teachers within the district, to write clear, concise, and detailed IEPs and evaluations that could be explained to parents in layman's terms, rather than to choose just one teacher to do this job. Training all teachers within the district to use the same required formats is essential, makes the most sense, and would appear to be the best educationally effective and economically sound approach, especially for both children and parents. Thank you. I would like to give this letter to you, Mr. Kenny, and you may pass along a copy to the superintendent.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Well, we're all... Very good.
Well, he's gonna, yeah, we're not gonna bite ya. Go ahead.
I just wanna add that, um, my brothers, my brother's twenty-three years old, they came, uh, to this school. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to move to Shasberry, was to have my children come here. Um, they had to, I bought up Manchester to try and get my kids to be seen as my special educator. As soon as I came here, she started seeing both of my children when they came into, uh, Shasberry and, um, got them on an IEP. Um, and it's not only a school, it's community and a family, and you're taking somebody out of this family. And everybody's gonna miss her if you end up taking her away from all of us. That's all I wanna add to what they said.
Anyone wanna take one more, if there's one more? If we're all set?
Fran?
Yeah.
I just wanna say something on a different note.
Sure.
Sue Fels is here tonight. She wasn't here the night that she came in her meditation. Um, I wanna make sure we recognize her and wish her goodwill, um, as she goes forward in, in life, and thank you for your service too.
Thank you.
Where are you headed?
Uh, just outside New York City.
Oh, okay. I had to ask.
Yeah, I'll go. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we will take this, these under advisement. Um, I can't answer anything tonight, obviously. I mean, I, I know not all the board members knew. Uh, I just told Dave about it last night, so, uh, we need to talk about it, whatever, and we'll go from there. Um, I wanna move right into the presentation, no, wait a minute, no.
No, go ahead, Dave. I wanna see the presentation too.
Oh, okay, good. I knew you had to go to another board.
Yeah.
Okay, good. We have the presentation, uh, Fifth Grade Trip to Nature's Classroom.
So, while I was at Nature's, so while I was at Nature's Classroom, there was, it was an amazing experience that I had a lot of fun at, and I know everyone else in the grade did. Um, oh, my name's Princess Gargens. Um, I learned so much there. Just one of the classes I took there was called Soccer Digestion. It related soccer to how your body digests your food, where if you had a hole in the soccer ball and you took Oreos, Tic Tacs, and cream soda, you put them in a plastic bag inside of the soccer ball, and you played soccer for a while. It relates to your digestive system, because the muscle working in your throat and your teeth mash it all up, and then it's really very fine, actually, before it even gets to your stomach where the acid works on of it. And another class I took was called, um, Wild Edibles with Mad Dog. And there's this little call and respond thing at Nature's Classroom, where for Mad Dogs, you go, you say hot dog, and then clap. And you, some of the things you can find out there that are edible are wood sorrel or white pine, which they tasted okay, but the wood sorrel is the best by far. Um, uh, let's see. I took, some other classes were called, with Yogi, called Feed Your Face, where you could have a little bit of a spa treatment while you, with just household objects you find lying around your house. And I also took one with, who was it? I think, I don't remember. Um, but some of my favorite memories I've had is with our field group leader. It's like a mini class, like when you get to college or high school or middle school. And you really form a relationship with your, uh, field group leader. So, when I left Nature's Classroom, I was losing someone, which I didn't like, but I loved the time I spent with her. And then, I think for the fifth grade, this was a really good experience, because you got to learn new things, be outside, and you just gotta be plain old being kid. But it was also hard for us, because we were around each other twenty-four seven, and we got on each other's nerves, but we survived this far, so what's stopping us from surviving? I mean, my, my field group leader's name was Coconut, and she was like a big sister to me, so I really miss her. And when you do leave, they give you this bracelet to remember them, and every day when I wake up, I look at this and I remember her. So, I wanna big, give a big thank you to you guys for helping us get there, and to the teachers that supported us.
Hi, my name is Andrew Penasi, and I really enjoyed the Nature's Classroom trip, and I feel like that the fourth grade now should be able to go on to the trip next year. Well, we were there twenty-four seven, learning all about nature and learning that outside is good for you, and you should go out every once in a while. And the staff there, they're really supportive of all, of all the kids. They're, they would help you with problems if you had any. And, uh, right with the field group leader thing, uh, my field group leader was Phoenix, and she had a bad life growing up, so, and then she just, she just wanted to help all of us and make sure that we respected everyone the way that we should be. And they taught, they taught us a lot about how, what, what to do in certain situations, like, we did this, we did a few simula- simulations, like, we did a homeless simulation, and we learned this, the, the hard, the hard life of homeless people, and what they have to do to get back on their feet. And it's, it was, it's really frustrating, so, yeah. I believe that every single class, you have to go here, go, go to Nature's Classroom if there is enough money. It's a really good experience for everybody, leaves a lot of memories, you get to meet a lot of new, a lot, a lot of new friends and a lot of new people, so, I believe that it's just really nice for people to go there.
So, as the teachers who brought, um, our awesome fifth graders to Nature's Classroom, we were gonna kind of introduce the kids, but as you can see, they were just so excited about this trip, they wanted to tell you about it immediately. Um, and we can't say enough about how amazing the trip is. Um, they just, they got more out of it than even we could've imagined. Um, and obviously, hearing from them is much more than you can get out of either of us. Um, we did put together a presentation, which we can flip through again, 'cause I know a lot of people are focusing on the kids, which is, which was awesome. Um, but we had the kids write reflections about their trip, and we pulled some really powerful quotes right from their reflections and put them up with some pictures from the trip, um, that show some of the experiences that they had, um, them bonding with each other and students from other schools, um, and just all the hands-on stuff that they did. It was amazing, and thank you so much for your contribution. Um, and it was definitely something that I'd be willing to send my kids on again and go with them again for a week. Um, it, hey, it was awesome, and I would do, and I would do it again in a heartbeat. Um, but on behalf of the two of us, our, our kids especially, a lot of their parents, um, we thank you, we thank the other families that have done a lot for us, um, and we thank, you know, everybody in the community, the Shasberry community, the Bennington community that have, that have supported the fifth grade in their trip to Nature's Classroom this year.
Was this your first time there?
It was.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yours too?
Yeah, yeah. So, hopefully it's not my last time.
Well, it's good to know that you'll do it again.
Yeah. I know, yeah. I mean, I'm gonna be sixth grade next year, but, um, we'll see.
We'll borrow it for a week.
Yeah. It was great. It's awesome.
Very good. Well, we were glad to do it. I'll tell you, anything like that that's gonna teach kids is...
I was really excited to see the amount of participation we got from our kids. Almost all of them went. There was one that we couldn't get to go, but of thirty-six kids, I think that's pretty awesome. Um, and we definitely couldn't have done it without, you know, the different fundraising and the support that we've gotten through, um, Donors Choose websites, and you guys, and just parents organizing stuff. Um, but it was, it was an awesome experience, and to see some of these kids who really light up in that certain, um, atmosphere was, it was great to see, it really was.
I mean, even at the end of it, I asked the counselors there, "How was the behavior?" And they said, "One of the best schools we've had."
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah. They said it was like night and day to the one that they had before us. I don't know where they were from.
Board members have any other questions? Sir?
No. Thank you, thank you for the presentation.
And, um, I mean...
Can we see the presentation? Yeah. Yeah. Put the lights on.
So, there's quotes by all the students. I think there's like thirty-five slides and pictures.
Sorry. Can you guys, can you present up front where they can see?
Because they moved this, I think.
Um, well, I can see the projector.
No, no, no. You need, so you can hear it. Are you speaking?
Thank you.
So, technology...
Let's go to the...
We'll show it now, I'm just saying that if, if it's something that you guys would like to keep for anything on file or whatever.
Yeah, we're gonna put together a big slideshow for the end of the year too, for the kids anyways, 'cause we have tons of pictures we have to compile.
There's like three hundred and eighty-seven of them, or something.
Wow.
This is only thirty slides.
Quick wait.
I was gonna kill it just recently. But yes, a very special thanks to you guys, um, and again, the donors, families, friends. We did get a lot of support, and it was greatly appreciated. Sorry.
I was just about to say, you might wanna exit out of it.
I'll just by the way, crowd, to say, I went up, I went up for a day. I wanna, I wanna see what these guys have fun they're having without me. So, I, I did go up for a day, and it was, it was incredible. Um, like, I think Tiff said, to see some of the kids that are very quiet in the classroom, you get them out in the woods and hike, and they're a completely different child, and they're so excited, and they're so engaged, um, they're having so much fun. And, um, the, I think the key to Nature's Classroom is they keep them extremely busy. The day I was there, the kids were pretty much going from the start of the day to the end of the day, um, and they're having a great time doing it. And I want, as the principal, I wanna thank the board and all the parents that helped out, and, um, all the donors that made it possible for their kids, 'cause it was a special opportunity that not every school gets. Um, and they did learn a lot at that, at that trip.
They're also completely unfudged for a week, aren't they?
Yeah, no electronics.
Yep, no electronics. At all.
And no junk food, soda. They can't bring anything like that with them.
And as you'll notice, one of the slides, the kids loved the food up there. They did not starve. So, although they didn't get to bring food, they were, they had access to it. Even not at meal times, if they wanted a snack, there was fruit available at all times, like apples, bananas, stuff like that, so they could, if they were walking by the dining hall area, they could go in and grab a snack at any time. Um, and even during meal times, um, they weren't, they didn't have to just go up, you know, to the buffet once. They could go up as many times as they wanted, um, but they did teach them about wasting food. So, and they were, the kids were very aware of the food that they were wasting by the end of the week. Um, and so they were feeding their faces, but being cautious not to take too much, knowing that they were so hungry, they could always go back up for more, but they couldn't put back what they had already taken.
Did they have the contest to, to measure the waste meal?
They did.
And try to get that in or...
Yeah.
Ornt, yes.
Ornt, as they call it, yeah.
I was gonna say, it's also nice, 'cause there's some kids that are never gonna get this opportunity again, and it's also, some kids aren't used to being away from home, and every single kid manages an entire week away, so, I was amazed by that.
And they were so tired, they didn't even know. The first night was a little rough, second night a little rough. After that, they passed out, they were out. So, it was easy after that.
Did any parents attend?
No, they, they...
Were the parents allowed to go?
They encourage us not to have parents, yeah.
There been electronic devices too?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
No phone calls home.
No phone calls home.
You can write a letter at the beginning of the week, that might get, that might get there by Friday.
And a lot of the kids did. They did write home. I think they learned quickly that they made it home before the letter did, but, uh, but a lot of them did write home.
It's like, "Hey, Billy, go get the mail." "Wait a minute, this is my letter." "It's just now starting to show up."
So, if you send me this in email, I can email it to all the, um, all board members, computers, like computers.
Well, it's, yeah.
Does anyone at least?
So, is that okay?
Yeah, we send anybody else.
I, I apologize, I just need to...
We wouldn't, we do wanna see it, so...
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's not gonna help you out too much, so...
Yeah, I did share, I was gonna say, I did share it with Jeff on Google Docs, so he can email it to whoever. I can email it to whoever.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, Kim, you can get it unless you've already done it.
No, I would like to see it.
Okay.
So, it looks like a new computer on the budget for a lot of it.
Yeah.
We need to do a fundraising for computers in America.
Oh, yeah.
And I was seven in this school, I was the same age.
If that's, if that's not gonna work for ya, you know, like you said, you can email it and stuff, if that, if you think it's, you know, how long it's gonna be.
Hope, hope.
She likes the lights on.
We'll do the supervisory part while this is going on and we'll see what happens.
First, I wanna thank everyone that presented this evening. I will take, uh, we'll meet with Wendy and take that into consideration. I had, I had Sarah prior to that, if they didn't mind. So we just, I certainly know what her wishes are. It's been a pretty busy time of year for us in Central Office. We have a lot of positions, key positions, that need to be filled. Turned it around for everybody else. I kind of forgot. That don't necessarily directly affect Shafter, but you are all part of the Supervisory Union, so. Last week, we did hire a, a new vice principal for the high school. And, uh, he'll be announced to the MAU Board next week. Um, Christopher Barnes, who is currently the principal at Arlington High School. Uh, today, we came to an agreement with, and will be presented to the SVSU Board in two weeks for the new director of early childhood education to replace Karen Bernal, who is retiring. So, uh, um, and that was just today, so I'm gonna hold off on her name, because I'm not sure if she notified her employer yet. So, but we did come to an agreement. We had a committee come together for that. And a really high-qualified candidate that, that we, because Karen's got some big shoes. Probably she's been in the position a long time, and that was a critical position. The other is, um, our HR Director, um, which is a critical position for us at the Supervisory Union. Uh, her last day is this Friday. She is moving back to Oregon with her family. And that is a loss for the Supervisory Union. We have that currently posted. And I have to say that the pickings are slim. So if I hear from, as I broadcast out here tonight, we, we would love to hear from some HR professionals who are interested to come, uh, come to work for us. Um, couple of reminders. It's, I know it's gone out, but it's worth repeating. The last day of school for students is June nineteenth, and it is a half-day. So here in Shafter, that means what time?
Twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock. Very good. So, and last day for staff will be the following Monday on the twenty-second. Another thing I wanna talk to you about this evening is, um, Act Forty-Six, which was House Three Hundred and Sixty-One, which is the Education Consolidation Bill. It did pass, and as I go around to the different, um, boards and give some highlights, and I know we're gonna have a busy summer with this. The ideal model that the state seems to be looking for is a pre-K through twelve school district of at least nine hundred students with one school board. And I know that might not be the model that every school district in our current Supervisory Union wants. But it is something that we're gonna have to look at because of the financial incentives that have been put into play in the bill, that it will be, would have to have good justification on why we're not going to do it. If all members of the, and it would take a vote from each community to consolidate. If we voted to do it, it would have to happen by June, um, excuse me, July of, um, twenty sixteen, which is a year from this July. That is the accelerated consolidation. And if they did it by then, there's five years of tax incentives. Uh, ten cents on the ten, eight, six, four, two reduction in the tax rate over five years, with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar transition grant available to the district in that first year. That's if you do it right up front. And then if you consolidated it after the first year, or anytime after that date, it's, uh, eight, that you lose the ten cents, but it's the eight, six, four, and two. So there is some money at play. And, uh, one thing that, you know, we've, we've been saying, that if you didn't do this, in some ways, you, you, one way to look at this is you might be funding somebody else, because how's the state gonna pay for this? Pay for these reductions? Someone else might be paying more to do that. So that, that's one thing to take into consideration. So as I've heard from some of the other boards that I've talked to, it's about, oh, Jim, we've heard this before. Yep, we have. You know, and we've heard, we've done RED studies before. And, um, so what's different this time? There is a ticking clock this time. There's a five-year clock ticking. That if we don't do something, then the state Secretary of Education can come in and draw up the consolidation lines and make those districts, and then make that recommendation to the State Board. And if they agree, it happens without any financial incentive to the school districts. Now, it doesn't mean we have to do their preferred model, which is the pre-K through twelve with one school board. We can make a case to, that we should be, that we already are efficient and operating efficiently, and maybe can share more resources and become more efficient. But, um, and then you can present that plan to the Secretary of Education for what our version of consolidation is. So that there is no, there's nothing in the provision that requires schools to be closed. There's nothing that forces consolidation, just that, um, ticking clock that within five years, you could have it be done to you. So we're really just beginning to look at the state is, along with the Vermont School Board Association, Superintendent's Association, um, and AOE is putting together this summer a series of workshops for districts to start to tend to, uh, get more information. I imagine now that the bill has passed, we, we will start to see regulations written from the Agency of Education of how a lot, this will be implemented. And I'm hoping for some guidelines from the Secretary of Education on if the board's route is to stay where we are and defend our efficiencies as we currently are, then what does that presentation need to look like when it goes to the Secretary of Education? So that we can keep all, all options available to us, because, um, I get many different opinions on how we, how we feel about consolidation. I think there's fear that, there's fear that my local school might close because, not necessarily here in Shafter. You have healthy student numbers, but in other places in our Supervisory Union, um, that could be a concern. And the other is the loss of control, where if you had one school board and not this board operating, that, that changes how, how things get done. So, uh, but because of the tax reduction incentives that are there, I, I think we, our due diligence is to look at that and present that, and then let the voters decide, uh, what they wanna do. So that pretty much sums up my report for this evening.
I think Tiff's ready.
Oh, Tiff's ready.
Before we lose it. So, our trip to Nature's Classroom. I hope we didn't ruin it. I'm gonna freak out if we did.
Well, we got the title page.
There you go.
So I really liked it there. I wanna go back to that. Do you want me to read all the quotes?
But they want you to.
I really liked it there. We were outside most, almost the whole day.
Hold on one minute there. He was gonna move the mic closer to you.
Nature's Classroom was a truly amazing experience. I would definitely go back there if I had the choice to. I loved, I mean, loved everyone that worked there. Coconut, Lego, Phoenix, Mad Dog, Yogi, Flip, Principal Kitty Puppy Bunny, Nurse Princess Buttercup, and a lot more. I liked the classes they had. My favorite part was doing night activities and definitely field groups. My favorite thing was my field group leader, Coconut. To start off, I had a great time. I cried when we left school, but after all, it was worth it. I learned new words that I had never even heard of. For example, Homo sapiens, animalia, and mammalia. I loved going to the cliff. The view is beautiful, and so was the waterfall. Last week at Nature's Classroom was the best week ever. And this picture, just so you know, involves the students from Woodfordian Monument as well. My absolute favorite thing was the class about endangered egg babies. I learned that if you have faith, you can succeed. I learned that a frog can throw up its stomach and eat it again.
Very useful fact.
I liked that every night, we all got together and did song and dance. My favorite song was Walls. I liked the hikes that we went on. They were great. I liked doing Grossology with my buddy. If I had to choose a trip to do again, it would be Nature's Classroom. And I choose that because it was the best week I ever had. I think it was the best field trip I've ever been on. It was an amazing experience for me to be able to go to Nature's Classroom. There was nothing I didn't like. If a kid is going to Nature's Classroom and he is not sure if he wants to go, I would tell him that he needs to go. It is so much fun there. The thing I liked best was making new friends. I liked doing the simulation because we learned about homeless people and how they lived. I learned that ort is wasted food. It was awesome when we had zero ort, which was Friday's breakfast. My favorite thing about Nature's Classroom was Phoenix, my field group leader. She told us personal stories. She said not to think of just yourself, to love our family. She taught me a lot of things. I learned about the muscles and organs inside a turtle. I liked the Predator versus Prey game, where you had to try to survive.
Just like Chicago.
I loved the food. It was gourmet and tasted like heaven. Overall, I think we all had fun and made new friends. My least favorite part was leaving, because it was so fun there. I hope I get to go back someday. So that's a thank you to everybody.
Okay.
And thanks for your patience. I'm just gonna leave that.
I'm sorry, I know Jim had, had to move on to the next meeting, but I just wanted to, to, to respond to what you just shared about the, uh, the Act Forty.
Six.
Six, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Personally, um, I think it's unfortunate that we're being boxed into this situation. But I do agree that we need to do due diligence, since ten cents on the tax rate is, um, uh, you know, certain, certain amount of money. So just wondering what the next step is gonna be. We're not meeting again in July, so.
Uh, right. Um, I, I don't know what's, Rick, can you, do you have an idea of what, how fast that's gonna move, or no? I mean, I, I, we can have a special meeting, but I, I mean, I'd like to stay abreast of what's happening, but.
It's, um, I mean, if you're gonna take advantage of the, um, accelerated, um, discounts, benefits, incentives, whatever you wanna call them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, voters have to take action by June thirtieth of next year. So I E., you would presume that you would have it structured, so it would be at your mayor's vote.
Okay.
Um, so a lot of work's gonna have to take place, um, between now and then. I'm assuming, Susan and I haven't talked much about this. Um, and I'm assuming this summer is gonna be a lot of, um, a lot of learning, going to, uh, various, um, meetings that he, you know, that people have announced, AOE and the School Boards Association.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, and I would assume that the SU Board would probably need to put, um, a committee together similar to what the RED Committee was a few years ago, that was representative to the school boards, to work through what the process was, and brings it back to the boards. Um, but that process seemed to work well. The result was then no, and maybe no again. But, um, from a process standpoint, I think that structure worked well. Um, I'm assuming we have something similar going forward, but.
Okay.
I think the next two months, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about not having a meeting, because I think the next two months is probably gonna be a lot of data.
Fact-finding.
And learning.
Yeah.
That's what I like here.
And then we'll probably hit the ground running pretty hard in September.
You know, watching the presentation here, it's sort of easy to imagine a board made up of, you know, eleven people from across the entire S U, with one Shafter representative, and Tim and other parents going to that board and saying, can Shafter have some money to go to Nature's Classroom? And the board's saying, you know, not unless we do it for everybody. So, and I think the, what's at stake here is, is kind of a lot.
And I think to, to wait to see exactly what they're trying to do is what we need to see, because I, they keep changing it all the time, so. Be interesting, so. Um, one thing I wanted to say while Sarah and some of the people here, um, there are some board members that haven't had their input on that. But it's, I've, I've talked with Sarah, and it's, it's gonna be, um, uh, the administration's gonna be dealing with whatever happens with Sarah. But some board members haven't known, but it'll be whatever they decide. But I wanted to make sure all board members had input, parents, friends, anything, so just want people to know that. I told the superintendent I would say that, so people knew, so. And with that said, I need to have a, a quick executive session, um, on personnel. Um, did you bring that, those charts? I have an extra one if you need that, before we do the.
The ones I emailed you?
Yeah, before we do the, uh.
I didn't bring any extra.
Okay, I've, I've got some. Uh, that's, yeah. Wait a minute. She, right here. Yeah.
I think we all have one. Holly brought, did you bring stuff everywhere, Holly?
Yeah, she, she should have one. Dave, you, yeah, Dave's got one too. So if we could do that. I'll go from there. Can we use that room?
Yep.
Over here.
Yep.
Do I need to make a motion on that? Yeah, need a motion to go in the executive session. Holly made it. Dave seconded it. All right, all in favor, aye. Okay. Motion to go back in open session. That's Dave and Holly.
Oops.
Gotcha. Okay. We're gonna move to the personnel. I guess we're, we're gonna break these up. Uh, we have off, uh, A, we have the off-contract fiscal year sixteen wages. Uh, I believe that is at three percent?
You need, someone needs to make a motion.
Somebody make a motion.
To, to.
It is three.
To talk about it?
Well, we gotta have a motion in a second, then we can have a discussion.
I'll make the motion then.
Okay. Okay, Dave seconded it. Okay, discussion.
And and just. Yeah, what is the motion?
For the off-contract fiscal year sixteen wages, which is. Three percent.
To to increase the.
Three percent increase, yeah.
This increase the salaries of.
Of the off-contract people, yes.
Which I think there's two.
Is there two or is there three?
Two or three, yeah.
Thought there was three. Yeah, it's it's three. Okay, discussion. Holly.
I don't have anything to say about it.
Oh, you don't have any? Oh, okay.
I'm just doing what you told me to do.
Okay, all right, so we'll vote on that. All in favor of the three percent for the off-contract people. Aye. Okay, unanimous. Okay. All right, we'll uh. Now, the gym, yeah, the gym teacher isn't on here.
It's a new position.
These are just these are just approving the positions.
Gotcha. I gotcha.
Then you gotta hire into them through the consent of gym.
Okay, let me get that out. Here we go. Okay. B, the approval of the new math teacher. It's a full-time teacher position. Need a motion?
So moved.
In a second. You second it. Discussion.
Who is the new math teacher?
We haven't we haven't appointed.
Haven't gotten there yet.
Make a motion to create a position.
Yeah.
This would be effective on July first?
Yeah.
Not not immediately, but yeah.
Okay, hearing none, discussion. All in favor of the new position?
All right.
Dave four. I'm gonna vote, no. It's two, Holly and and me.
Do I have to say why?
No. C, approval of the new kindergarten paraprofessional. That's a full-time position, E S P position. I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Okay, Dave seconded it.
Seconded.
Okay, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of that position? Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain, only one abstention. Okay, treasure treasures report, May. I don't have that. Do you have that, Rick?
I have a copy.
Oh, you do?
I printed it off the website. It was there this afternoon.
Really? I I looked for it. I didn't have it on mine.
Late late this afternoon.
Did we?
Wasn't in the packet.
That's coming to the consent agenda.
Sorry.
Any copies?
Yeah.
Oh, the treasures report?
Do you have one?
I did. I ran one off.
Oh, you ran yours off, so yeah, yeah, just.
It's because you're technologically illiterate.
Well, that's true. What are you gonna do?
That's not necessarily a bad thing, except Dave's.
No, I know. I know.
I wish I was most of the time.
I hope he makes one for me. I have one for it.
Here, if you wanna.
I have it somewhere. I just got it in my hands already.
You guys all set for the treasures report? I'm gonna wait so I can see it, but okay. Okay, all in favor of the treasures report? Unanimous, okay. Next is the trash compost and recycle services.
I can close. Yeah, you haven't closed. Two bidders. Casella and Lee was your low bidder. By a couple hundred bucks.
Right.
So I need a motion to who you want to award this to.
I'm going to, there is seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents difference between there's Tam and there's Casella.
The full three-year number, you mean?
The full three-year number, yes. So for me, I I guess I would make a motion that we offer this contract to Tam. He's local, and for the sake of two hundred dollars, plus he does the the composting, um that's, I gotta have a second, so.
You made the motion. Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
So it he. Casella is not local?
No.
Where do they?
Sunderland.
They're based in Sunderland, okay. So they're not within our district anyway?
Yeah. I usually have always took the lowest number.
Yeah.
But in this case, this is a a local resident. He has his business here. He's gone through our school system from here, high school, Mount Anthony. Uh I can carry some weight with me, anyway.
I mean, that's all true, and um the business, the business, um you know, employees, people in our district, and I suppose there's something to be said for that, too.
I mean, there is a couple hundred dollars, as Rick says, difference per year, but if it was two thousand, then I'd probably have to reconsider, but.
Are we setting a precedent that we might wish we hadn't set?
No, we we've taken sometimes the highest bid. You know, depends, and sometimes we take a lower bid on.
Currently, Trevor Tam is Tam is is our hauler?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and we don't have any concerns with.
Uh, not that I know of. I've heard good things about. He takes care of us and he does a lot of stuff here at the school for Tam.
Yeah, I would just chime in that I I imagine the school has a a higher a purchasing policy much like the town, and you're you're not required to take the lowest.
Right, that's right.
Required to to look at several bids typically. Uh I would encourage you to go with Tam because you've had good service because he's local. Uh he's a member of the community.
Well, that's. Yeah.
He supports the school in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
I think it would be a I think it would be bad precedent to ignore all that community involvement for a couple hundred dollars.
Good point. Can I ask once?
Go ahead.
I remember we, how much of, is this broken down into composting and garbage?
Told them together, so it includes.
There's a new state law that um was passed a couple of years ago, which will be fully implemented or will require the schools to be fully implemented, I think, in twenty twenty. This contract will begin to implement that now, so we will be ahead of the compliance of the law.
My my thought was, I just remember a discussion with them, the food scraps are all taken care of, it sounds like, and there was a man, that community member that could utilize them, and I just wondered if we.
Yeah, that's state has different regulations for everything now, and it's.
Well, don't we do like vegetables and fruit? Believe it'll, I.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's a good thing. Okay, there's a motion in a second. Do we, did we do it? Yeah, we did. Okay, all in favor of the motion of Tam? Unanimous, okay. Okay, the budget transfer request. Rick, I know Holly had some questions on that, I think.
Okay, this has to do with um Nature's Classroom, you just.
Yeah. Have any questions, Holly? Now's the time to ask.
I just, as I said before, I guess I'm just really concerned about things coming down the road, so it's all of, as far as I'll expand.
Yeah, this is um, you're obviously at the end of this year. If you look at your budget status report, you're um, you know, you're you're in pretty healthy shape. This is um, this is re actually a decision that was made a couple of months, a couple of meetings ago. We just, I just need to clean up the the bookkeeping and.
So this is, what we're, the the requests always say, per the request of administration, the following requires board approval. The board the board has indicated to the administration that we want you to go through this exercise essentially every time we need to shift some money from one company.
The board has a budget transfer procedure.
Procedure, okay.
I don't call it a policy. You don't need to go through that.
Yeah.
And everyone, all, actually, not every district has one. Some districts um just require me to keep the books appropriately, but um your district, in in a nutshell, I can't remember yours exactly, basically says that Jeff has the authority to move up to ten percent of any function. So, for example, if it was in the um phys ed department, he could move ten percent of whatever that total function is within that department, but if you're moving it to other departments, um he needs vote, he needs board authority. We're moving money around, obviously, from transportation contracted services and a little bit of transportation.
Am I looking at the right one here? Twelve thousand, six hundred thirty-six?
No, eight thousand dollars.
Oh, that was the the last month's one? We're doing that again?
Unless I got the wrong.
You're right, Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you've got the correct.
I've got the wrong one. Yes, twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-six.
Is this to cover?
No, this isn't Nature's Classroom.
It's a different. So what what do we have here?
This is just cleaning up your uh budget scan report. So for example, if you look at salary elementary yard, obviously, it's only a buck, but. That's right on the first page. So for some reason, you don't see it here, but that's gonna be over expended by a dollar, so we just wanted to clean that off. Severance retirement, um eleven oh eight, that's just um must be phys ed. We don't budget the retirements um in the specific functions. We budget them in general, and actually, part of this problem is um our auditors, what we typically have done in the past is the severance payment would go out the next fiscal year in July. Auditors said they didn't want that. That's not the way we should be doing it. They want it paid in the same fiscal year that the individual retired in. So we had to pay it out of this year. It wasn't budgeted for. We obviously have some money in in health instruction, um health insurance, instruction line, the eleven hundred function, which is largely covering that. The FICA that goes associated with that retirement. Then the Board of Ed had some professional development that they've done, probably somebody went to a V S B A meeting here or there or somewhere. And contracted services Board of Ed, I think, is um your um, some of your legal stuff, maybe, that was going on with District One. That'd be something else.
Yeah, it's gonna be something else, that's.
I don't know exactly what that is, but you're over eight hundred fifty-seven bucks. On the uh Board of Ed contracted service.
Seems like we took some money out of that account for.
You did. You took hundred fifteen dollars off or something.
Yeah.
So we'll put some of that.
Something better.
Okay, so you need a motion. That needs to be voted out.
Yeah.
So I need a motion.
So moved.
And Holly, you second it, okay? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Abstaining?
I am abstaining.
Okay, so an extension to four, okay. Okay. To the consent agenda. You have minutes and the warrants. Anything on either one?
Just know that since you did not approve the one position that you need to pull.
Right. Okay, so we need to pull the math teacher nomination. So it would be the kindergarten paraprofessional and the physical education teacher.
Yeah, the kindergarten professionals have two votes.
The position was approved. Now they have to hire someone into the position.
Right, two votes does not make it applicable.
It does, yeah.
Three's a quorum.
An approval of the quorum.
So all the, everything we've been.
Your rules are different than ours.
Yeah, we've just been approved a number of.
Because it requires, our rules rules require quorum of the board, so if there are three people there, it takes all three votes to make it pass. You just need to?
Yes, just to.
They need the majority of the quorum.
Yeah. Okay, so anything on the minutes? Nothing, anything on the warrants?
I had a question for Rick, that that there's a almost forty thousand dollar overpayment of property taxes that was written back to the town.
Yeah.
And I gather that has something to do with um I don't know what. What is that? What is that? Why are we paying? And is it towns, is it the towns' money that they paid us by mistake? Or were told to pay?
Yes, it's the town money. They did not pay it by mistake. What happens is we submit the budget that was approved by the voters. And someone in Montpelier, a combination of A O E and the property valuation department, um figure out how much of that is coming from property taxes and how much of that is coming from the Ed Fund. Where they they um they anticipate how much of that is coming from the Ed Fund. And they give out what's called a preliminary cash flow in September and say, because you get state aid in September, December, and April, um your state aid payments. And then the town pays you on behalf of the state the money that they collect during taxes. You're a receiving community, um so you get from both property taxes and the Ed Fund. I guess technically it's all the Ed Fund, but you get from property taxes and the other revenue from the Ed Fund. So they do their preliminary cash flow, and then once um once the taxes are set and they get through with all the property valuations, I don't know if there was any appeals or something that was going on. They do a final cash flow around April or May, and they say, okay, our guess wasn't correct. Either the town owes us money or we owe them money back after they reconcile. Now, this is actually one of the larger numbers I've seen Shasberry pay back, but it's based on the state's estimation of what the cash flow.
Does it, does it indicate that we had, uh the property values went up, or we had a bigger grant list or a smaller grant list?
You know, I don't know. I've never dug that deep into it to.
Trying, yeah.
Really figure out why, or what, um. That would make sense that you must have, must have saw some property values somewhere that they weren't anticipating, or, I don't know, I look into it.
We got a bigger stake share somewhere in the formula, right?
Could be, I mean, it could be a whole host of things. Um.
So we, we got a check from you guys, uh, and we were surprised by it too, by the size of it, um, over at Cole Hall. And I s- so it's taxes that were collected as school taxes that are coming back to the town. So we're.
Right.
Treasurer, we're trying to figure out what to do with that money, whether it's, belongs to, is dedicated to the school or goes to?
No, I think it's your, I think it's your money, I think it's the town's money.
But it was collected as school taxes. And it was more taxes than the school, more than the school needed for their budget.
Right. You guys didn't see, you guys didn't see that? You should have saw that reconciliation.
Um.
Well, actually, your wife should have saw that reconciliation.
Yeah, we were talking about it today, uh, cause we got, I checked, it was, the check we saw was seventy thousand dollars for some reason. So there may have been other monies mixed in there, that's, but the, the amount you sent was forty thousand dollars.
Thirty-eight, hopefully you haven't seen it yet, cause the board hasn't approved it yet.
If we approve it.
His wife told me we got seventy thousand dollars from the school today. Or maybe she was like, read something that said we were expecting to get that. We're not sure.
MAU, maybe?
Oh, yeah, you probably saw.
Makes sense, MAU.
Yeah, thank you.
We're gonna get another thirty-eight from you.
You probably saw from MAU.
Okay, so we got the minutes, we got the warrants.
Thank you.
And we've got, uh, two nominations, we got the Andrea Barfoldy and Christopher Fifield? That's, okay. And I'll just take them all at once, or do we have, I don't think, we don't have to take them separately?
I wonder, I don't know if it's appropriate, Jeff, do you wanna say anything about the new, about the individual that we're about to approve as the new gym teacher?
He's an excellent hire, we're lucky that he wants to come here, um, he's not local, but he, uh, actually know him a little bit from when I was at the middle school as a PE teacher, he's an excellent teacher, there's a lot of extra activities at the school he's at now, similar to what Howard's done, I'm not saying he can replace Howard, but, um, I think we're very fortunate to have him come to Shasbury.
Wait, can we pull that one separate and do the other as a packet?
What, which one?
The gym teacher.
Oh, you wanna, well, no, we're not, we pulled the math teacher.
I know, but you said you're gonna do it as a package deal.
Right.
Can we do a package without the gym teacher?
Well, I suppose, yeah, I guess I could.
I mean, I want you to do the gym teacher.
Right.
Okay.
But, okay.
Pull nominations and do a nomination separately.
Right, okay.
I wanna do it, I wanna vote on this, the gym teacher.
Okay, so.
So I'll move the consent agenda without the, uh, gym teacher and without the math position teacher.
Okay, alright, very good. All in favor of, of the consent agenda with the exceptions of the gym and the, uh, math teacher.
I think we need a second though.
Oh.
Second.
There you go, okay, no discussion, hearing none, all in favor of that motion.
Alright.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, now, we'll take the nomination for, uh, Christopher Fifield, physical education teacher.
I, no, yes, I love it.
Alright, and Dave will second it.
Second, yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor of that motion, uh, unanimous, okay.
Did you vote on the par position?
No, I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, well, that was part of the.
Consent agenda, okay, that's thought I thought and I.
Cause you only pulled the two teachers, right?
Right.
Yep.
Fifield and the math.
Approved, that's all I need to.
Yeah, okay. All set, right? Well, I make sure you, uh, okay.
It's, it's done.
Okay.
I made a mistake.
No, no, that's fine. Okay, now. Moving on here, we have policy. Um, we have policy number sixteen forty-one, it's computer network and internet acceptable use, that is for warning. Need a motion in a second. Holly motioned it, Dave seconded it. Okay, discussion.
They, they discussed it at the, the, the policy meeting and said this would be, uh, uh, one that will need
Okay.
Adjusting, um, more often than not, maybe.
Okay, so any, so basically.
No, they didn't change anything in it, but I just wanted to, you may see this.
They were all set with it, okay, okay. Dave, you got anything?
Yep.
Okay, uh, then all in favor of policy number sixty-one forty-one, or six, wait a minute, I just see a problem here. This policy says, policy number on this one is sixty-one forty-one, the one on the, uh, agenda is sixteen forty-one.
So we have to wait?
Um.
No, just clarify, I mean, I said.
Just, we'll just clarify it. Yeah, I'll put sixty-one forty-one. So, ah, okay, sixty-one forty-one, okay. Okay, next one is the search and seizure, uh, number fifty eighty-five. And this is for adoption. Anything on this, Holly?
No, they put, they put that little, but I've had many people, I'm not gonna argue it or send it back, but I've had many people want clarification on what is a good fate, so that's all I'll, I'll say, we can.
Okay, well, I'll need a motion.
Just where the change was, what does, and it's okay. We won't.
Yeah. I need a motion in a second anyway, I didn't get that, so you motioned it, Dave seconded it. And, uh, okay, any more discussion on that policy? Okay, and this is for adoption, so, alright, all in favor of this policy? Unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the facilities, Jeff.
So in the warrants today was the check for the water, the drain water permit that we need to send to the state, which we'll be able to send up tomorrow morning, um, now that that's approved, so, uh, once that goes through, we'll be pretty much ready to go for the parking lot, so I wanted to get approval, cause we talked about taking that, those funds from the capital reserve fund. Um, I just wanna have that in place this summer as we start that project.
Now, that, that figure on the sheet, I got that. That was sixteen thousand, sixteen five.
I think that's what we're budgeting for, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's gonna go that.
Oh, okay, so that, even with the five, okay, alright, I just wanted to.
Five hundred dollars in there.
Okay, alright, good.
That's the, that's the plan at least, so I just wanna have that in place this summer, cause we're starting a project as soon as that permit comes in.
Okay, very good, okay. So we need the approval of that, that's actually, yeah, so all in, I need a motion first. Holly motioned, Dave seconded it, uh, all in favor of that, uh, money's a sixteen thousand, five hundred. Or is that just for the five fifty, though?
No, it's for the, it's for the project, yeah.
Okay, for the project.
It's a water.
That we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
File state.
Throwing the permit in there through the five fifty. Yeah, well, we're gonna, yeah, I figured.
So before you act.
Yeah, go ahead.
The five fifty, I took out of, and that's actually what, it's just reminding me, that's what's driving your, uh, Board of Ed.
The eight fifty-seven?
The contracted services, I'm, I'm pulling that out of this year's.
Oh.
Board of Ed money, I'm not taking that out of, that's just a permitting fee.
Okay.
Uh, if you want me to do it, I can, I can take it out of the reserve fund, but.
No, let's leave it as is.
I mean, I, you, you had the money of this year's money, so I figured that'd be better to take that, it leaves the reserve fund to use for the.
Okay.
For the construction.
So, so earlier the transfer that we just approved moves money.
To cover that.
To cover that, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
And then the motion is to not exceed the sixteen five or whatever.
Sixteen thousand, five hundred, I got it on the sheet right here. Okay.
Is that, I just wanna, I'm.
Yeah, it's sixteen.
I'm just asking, is that what you ought to do?
Yes, it's sixteen five, that's what we've got on our chart anyway.
Yeah, and that's just for the construction.
Construction.
We'll leave the five fifty out of the Board of Ed.
Yep.
Okay.
Works for me. Okay, all in favor of that motion, unanimous, alright, very good. Uh, principal reports.
Um, I wanna thank the PTO and all the volunteers for a very successful big truck night, a couple, I think, it was two weeks ago, I think it was now. Um, it was, it was extremely well attended, um, I was charged with selling tickets for the games and, uh, I was busy for the whole two hours I was there selling tickets. We had a, a bit of a local celebrity in Tuffy from National Geographics Building Wild, he came with a truck, he's over in Huesick Falls, you ever seen his show, they build cabins out in the middle of the woods? Um, he came, he was pretty popular, we had, I think, over twenty trucks locally come, yeah, it's the biggest one I think we've had. Uh, and some very, very big trucks, um, raised a lot of money for the PTO, um, and they wanted to thank everybody that was involved, um, including those people that brought the trucks and sponsored that. We also had the, um, Taiko drummer come, uh, last Tuesday, I think it was, Deft Daily set that up, uh, through the Tillner Fund, you guys approved. Uh, it was really good exposure of a different culture for our kids, uh, and they had a great time, he did an all-school presentation, and then he met with every grade level in the gym, and they all got a chance to drum on these huge big drums. And, uh, I didn't see, could see a lot of it, I was pretty busy that day, but, uh, the buzz around the school was, everybody really enjoyed it, the kids had a great time, parents had a good, or the teachers had a great time, and they learned a lot about, um, the Asian cultures through that. Uh, the second thing, I'm gonna strike the tech budget draft. The last thing is my administrative goals, leadership goals for this coming school year. So in the first column is, um, the different domains that we look at, I can look at, in the multi-dimensional principal, uh, performance rubric, and I choose different areas that I wanna, I wanna focus on in the upcoming school year. The middle column is the, my goal as administrator, and then the last column is what, if you looked on the rubric, that's what, how the effective would look like, if I was performing at a highly effective, which is my goal, to, um, to reach that. The first goal is to look at our safety and emergency plans, um, not the, not necessarily the safety and safety issues around the school, but the actual procedures we have for fire drill, for evacuation, for stage two evacuation, for bomb threats. I wanna sit down with the, um, EMS, um, I've already talked with a couple of state troopers that are parents here, and they're willing to sit down with me and look those over and see if they can be updated, I don't think they've been updated in quite some time. And that's something I think would, um, it's more and more prevalent in the news, and I think we, I mean, next year we have all our bases covered and we're doing the right procedures with all those things. We are doing a, uh, a stage two evacuation on Monday with our kids, where we'll do a fire drill, meet out in the field like we usually do, and then once attendance is done, we're, everybody counted for, we're gonna walk everybody to the Methodist Church, which is our stage two evacuation, if we need to leave the property, just so people can be familiar with that, because that, that hasn't been done since I've been here, and I think that's an important piece. So I wanna look those plans over and procedures and make sure we, we have all our bases covered. The second goal really, um, keeps me accountable as far as keeping up to date on, uh, current educational issues and, um, topics that are affecting Shasbury, um, including the Act forty-six that Jim talked about earlier and what that could mean for us. So that's that goal, um, the third goal is continuing the MTSS work that we're doing and creating a schedule and collaboration time and just basically following through with, when we started this, our, our vision was these are all our students. And what can we do to be effective and efficiently with the staff that we have, we have a wonderful staff that does some great things. And how can we be effective and efficient and create, um, those infrastructures that allow that? So I'll continue that work with that, that's an ongoing goal. And then the last one is, um, around technology and creating, um, through my own professional development. Uh, I am attending a, a workshop or a conference this summer on techno- educational technology, and I wanna bring some of those, um, ideas back with me and how we can help support the teachers and students here with, with some technological resources that we may not have accessed in the past. So, any questions?
That's good, that's good.
Did you work with the superintendent on coming up with these?
Uh, well, what, what happens, the superintendent does a evaluation of my, of my year, um, that she gives me, I do, I work with Donna most of the time, so Donna gave me the rubric and said, okay, Jeff, there's some goals you wanna work on, and I, um, I, I throw a draft at her, she looks it over, we talk about it, um, she gives me some advice if, if she thinks I need to refocus here or there, and, um, but primarily it's what I think I need to, to work on to better the Shasbury community.
Right, and then do you, do you get the benefit of her feedback or somebody's feedback, you know, twelve months later saying?
Yep, yeah, we revisit, we revisit, yeah, yep, um, and even before that, you know, um, I like to, this is posted on my, my, right in front of my desk, I'm like, boards, I see them every day. Cause sometimes we write things and then we file them away somewhere and we don't remember them again for twelve months. Any other questions?
That's, that's good, good to see. I think the board's, the board's gotta get together and be one of those extra meetings where we sit around and see what we're gonna do for goals ourselves, we, we haven't done that, so that needs to happen, obviously. Okay, all set?
Okay.
Okay. Alright, Chair, the only thing I have on Chair's report, I did talk with, um, Jack Fair, cause we were, we had talked about the, uh, septic and the, uh, grease traps and all that stuff, that was, that was done before he left, I don't know how, I don't know how long, can't remember how long Jack's been gone, but, been a little while, but we, we had done all that, the, uh, and the new pump, he said that was a, so he says, it was a new pump, so.
He just did a whole new septic system.
Right, right, I can't remember the year. We, we put, we put the, uh, piping into the kitchen, the whole nine yards, it was a, we decided to do the whole thing, but I tried to look for some old paperwork that I have, I haven't found it yet, but I got a bunch of stuff stuck in the barn and I'd like to go over that and see what it, but Jeff has said, we, probably in the next two years, we oughta look at that, that's, that's.
John, John just does the inspection for us every year, and he's suggesting that we, we take a, a good look at it.
Okay, good, alright. So I just wanna find out when we, uh, we should be a record of some, of that somewhere.
John did, John did the septic.
He does.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he said if you, you know, the cost, and he, he has all the plans already.
Yeah.
This is a suggestion that we might wanna replace the system or?
The, the pump.
The, the pump.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, we do have a backup, but that backup, that.
Oh, yeah.
Backup and then, we're talking about having it.
Yeah, the pump was like, what, thirty?
It's old.
Something, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay. And I talked about board goals, we need to do that. Okay, I have a letter here that Larry wanted me to read tonight. I told him I really didn't wanna do it, but I will anyway, but, um, cause he couldn't be here, so anyway. He says, I would like to extend my apologies to the board for my not being in attendance this evening. My granddaughter's graduation from preschool has taken precedence. I've asked the board chair with the board's indulgence to read a brief statement in an answer to a question recently asked at an SVSU meeting by Shasbury resident Marilyn Woodard. Ms. Woodard's question was why I, had I attended an MAU executive session concerning the hiring of the new MAU principal? My answer is that I was there if needed to represent the interests of citizens of Shasbury. All of the criteria for my attending that meeting were met. First of all, I followed the established precedent where non-board members are allowed to attend executive sessions. Mr. Durfee, our elected MAU rep, was out of town and unable to attend. Board Chair, Mr. Kenny, our other MAU rep was very ill that evening. Uh, faced with the possibility that he might not be able to attend or possibly sit through the meeting, he asked me as vice chair to attend in anticipation of his possible absence. When he was asked, MAU Board Chair, Tim Halbert, gave his consent for me to attend the session. No other MAU board member took exception to my being there, and the superintendent did not challenge my being in attendance. If anyone has additional questions concerning this matter, please feel free to contact me, meaning Mr. Johnson. So, and that's all I had. Is there any other business?
It's not really another fan, but.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to go back, I, I hope, I'm, I'm just troubled by the board's not approving the math teacher position. And I would respectfully ask that the board be willing to take it up again, uh, at a future date. The, the, this, this board, and it was a different, the board was made up of different people, but we, we discussed this extensively uh, during the budgeting process and had, uh, I think, a lot of press. Uh during the budgeting process and had, I think, a lot of press coverage. I remember you pointing out at the annual meeting that it was somewhat controversial.
Yeah.
But the money was in there and the public, as far as I know, didn't have any particular issue with it, so.
I'm, I'm willing to do that, I have some questions and I wanted to talk to Jeff after the fact. And I, I just have some concerns and I wish I had more information on this. Bill forty-six or H three sixty-one or whatever they're co- gonna call it, and I, I'd like to, I don't wanna put. This district in a deficit spending, uh it's just a concern I have, I never have done it, and I, I just wanna be sure. Uh this may come back up, uh but I, I want all board members to have uh an opportunity to, to voice their concerns and. And we can go from there, so I.
Thank you.
I agree, yeah. Any other? Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn. And Dave seconded. Okay, thank you, and I wanna publicly thank the teachers in this school, I know it's a tough hall all year long and. I wish more of them were here, but just publicly say that.